Oh yeah, I'll do that. I'll do that. I'll do it after, um, no, I'm dead serious. Yeah. I'll do it after that. Um, did she print out one of those for me though? She didn't put the supplemental. Allison, did you get supplemental on here? We gotta get started. Did you bring the supplemental agenda out here? I don't see it. It's all source right there. Okay, I'm gonna move this up. No, I got it. This is fine. It's almost time. It's six, it's 6:00 PM. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting Wednesday, July 13th at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and do the pledge allegiance. Please help, please join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
So, Allison, roll call please.
Yes. Counselor, Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Olson. Counselor Novak.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here. So, thank you very much for the roll call. Next thing in the, just a special presentation by Cardva, but I want to start with, because we've been locked down and a lot of people don't know what nonprofits are available, services are available in the city, because we've been disconnected as a community, doing virtual meetings and not having, you know, getting together, get to get togethers, I've started asking nonprofits to come and tell us 10 minutes about what they do, what services they provide. And so I was lucky enough, blessed enough, to have my first meeting with Kate Caldwell from Cardva. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to her. She's asked 10 minute presentation, and if there's any questions and answer from the council, they'll be able to ask those questions. So I'd like to welcome Kate Caldwell to the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, Mayor Johnson. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak with you all. I'm hoping that I can share my screen. Is that something that is available?
Matt, is that possible?
Looks like it.
Yes, it is.
But now I'm, here we go. I'm not the fastest on these kind of things, but hopefully, there's a, there's a, on this kind of screen, there is something that sits over top of where I can start my, maybe I can just do this. There we go. All right, we're in business. Thank you so much. So again, my name is Kate Caldwell. I'm the executive director here at Cardva, the Center Against Draping Domestic Violence. We've been in business for over 41 years. We are the only domestic violence and sexual assault shelter and hotline in Lynn and Benton County, and it's been that way all that time. We have two missions here. Our first mission is to provide services to do and support to those who are experiencing those violences. And we also provide education and leadership in the community to change the conditions that lend to these forms of violence. And we are a team of 27 men and women who do that every day on a daily basis. So, most people have heard of Cardva and either know that we have a hotline or that we have a shelter. And that is indeed true. And the hotline is on your screen right now, and it is the best and most effective way for someone to quickly get assistance from our organization. We are available 24/7. We've had the same exact number since 1978, actually, and it's never been turned off in all that time. But let's take a little bit of a deeper look at Cardva and kind of what it is that, that we do. Yes, we have a shelter and yes, we have a hotline. These are some of our other services that we provide, and I want to highlight the two that are in blue quickly. Our chat line is relatively new, and it is created for someone who either does not have access to a telephone, does not feel comfortable on the telephone, or isn't allowed to use the telephone. And it is available 20, excuse me, six hours a day, Monday through Friday, and is accessible through our website, texting, email, or messaging. And it's really a great way, especially for the younger generation, who only know that this is how you communicate. So it has really grown in popularity, and it's really a great way as an alternative to the phone. And on the bottom there, our housing and financial coaching programs are relatively new as well. And housing, we have a housing advocate whose job it is to help folks who either need to get into transitional housing or transformational housing, or who need support in staying in their safe housing. And that includes the fact that we have funding available to provide someone, if they have the income to either get into and be able to pay a monthly rent or stay in their monthly rental, but perhaps don't have the, the basic funds to get started. We have that kind of funding, and we can help someone with their first, first month's rent and their, their security deposit. We can also help folks who are in housing already and perhaps need some assistance with their regular financial needs in order to stay in their safe housing. So this has been, this has been a really great program, and it also included our ability to provide emergency housing vouchers through the Lynn-Benton Housing Authority. We had over 30 of our survivors be able to take advantage of that special program that came through HUD. Our financial coaching program is actually brand new. We have a certified financial literacy coach on staff whose job it is to help survivors figuring out their finances or perhaps teaching them the importance of budgeting, the, the importance of spending properly, debt reduction, credit card reduction, things like that. It also happens to have with it a matching savings program that a survivor can open a savings account at Central Willamette Credit Union, and as they put money in, we will match it two to one. So they can put as much as $500, up to $500 into their bank account, and we're gonna give them $1,000 to match it, and now all of a sudden they have $1,500. These programs, housing and financial, can actually really be life-changing for someone who is afraid to leave a violent home because they don't know how to get started. They're pretty excited about both of those programs. You know, abuse does not discriminate. We all know that. And neither do we discriminate. We will literally help anyone who reaches out to us. But I'd like to show these two pictures because they tell a story. That top picture is actually a picture of our original shelter that was opened in 1981. And you can tell by the picture, the story is that oftentimes adults come to our shelter, not alone, but with their children. And their kids are really secondary survivors too. So we're really working with, oftentimes with a family. And it's important that the community remember that because what they see and hear oftentimes through social media or through television or entertainment just is the, the sole survivor, but there's very frequently kids involved as well. So let's take a look at these facts and statistics. I'm not going to read them out. I'm gonna ask you to take a look at them, but also I'd like to ask you to listen to just a really brief little vignette of what kind of work we do. So several months ago, we received a phone call about 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning from the Albany Police Department saying, "We have a situation on our hands that is extremely lethal, and we need your help." That's a very unusual phone call for the police to make to Cardva. But the situation is this. We're working with a survivor, is a very lethal suspect, and we can't find that suspect. So when you are working with the survivor, Cardva, in the next several hours, if you call the survivor and they don't answer, then please call us instantly. If you are talking to the survivor on the phone and the survivor hangs up abruptly, please call us instantly because that will tell us that the suspect has found the survivor. Those are pretty chilling words for us, and we're in, been in this business for a long time. However, we took it very serio- seriously, and we started working with the survivor right away. And sure enough, it was an adult female and two kids. And they knew, she knew that if she could get out of town with a few things, she could be in safe, in a safe place in several hours. So our task was to try to find a way to help her do that. And so the team came to me and said, you know, we almost never use, we almost never would hire, hire a U-Haul for someone. We almost never, because of the credit card, and who knows what's gonna happen to the U-Haul on the other end, and then we're, we're liable. And I said, "Stop. Get the U-Haul." "No, you don't, you know, are you sure you understood? Get the U-Haul." Okay, so it did take us about two and a half, three hours to find a U-Haul that would seat three people, because apparently there's not very many of those, get it rented, get it to her place, and get her loaded and out of town. And it was really a great feeling. She called us two or three times that day. "Have you heard anything? Have they found him?" And she said, "Have you heard from the police?" "No, we haven't heard anything. We're checking in with the police." "No, we haven't, you know, nothing's happened." Finally, that night, the police department called us and said, "We've got him. He's locked up. He's not going anywhere. He'll be in custody for a long time." And we were able to make that phone call to that woman and her children and give her a real sense of safety and security. And she got where she was going. Thank God. And I remember going home from work that day, thinking to myself, huh, what'd you do today? Maybe saved a life, maybe three. Pretty damn cool. But it's this, this bevy of ninjas that work with me that do that kind of work. But I think it gives you a little bit of a vignette. And if you look at these numbers, while we are located primarily in Benton County, almost half of our survivors come from Lynn County. You can see that. What's, you know, and, and many, and many kids involved. So this, these are the 2021, 2022 numbers. What, the other number that I have here, because it's sort of relevant to our relationship, our newer relationship with the city of Albany, is in 2122, we spent $32,000 in motel stays because sometimes our shelter is not the right fit, but we're gonna still take care of someone. So we'll put them into a motel. And actually, $14,000 of that got spent in a motel in Albany. And I bring this up because we are in the process of working with the city on a CBBG grant that helps support this exact service of ours for those who come from Albany. And I just think it's important for people to realize how wide of a net we cast. We drove 22,000 miles in the last year to meet with clients, to go to law enforcement responses, hospital, and so forth.
Gentlemen, this meeting, with somebody speaking, they have the floor. Thank you. Go ahead and finish up, Kate.
Okay, so sorry. All right. So just an important fact that I think is, is interesting. So what you've been hearing about is reactive work. But I'd like to talk about that second part of our mission, which is our preventive work. And that is our educational program. We presented in this last school year to 2,761 middle and high school students in Lynn and Benton County. We have two programs. One is a healthy relationships program, and the other is a deeper dive that we created last year. It's called Prevention and Safe Intervention, and it is a continuum of curriculum. And the idea is that we will see those kids in 7th grade, and 8th grade, 9th grade, and up to 12th grade. And by the time they're coming out of 12th grade, they will have all the tools in their tool belt to help them make intelligent, good decisions about what relationships should look like, and how they can live a life that perhaps takes them away from being an abuser or away from being a victim. So we're really pretty excited about this because this is how we are going to help change the conditions that haven't actually changed in a very, very long time. So we're pretty excited about that. And we've seen some serious impact just this year with these educational programs. In addition to the work that I've described and, and the work that we want to do, it is important for us to really be reaching out into the communities so that we continue to either build or rebuild partnerships. And so I'm really excited to be able to be here, and first of all, to say thank you for allowing me to speak, but also to ask the city of Albany and the council and the mayor, what can we as Cardva, what can we be doing to better our partnership with the city of Albany and with you all? So I leave you sort of with that, that question and a reminder that all of our services are free and confidential, and they are available to everyone. And I, I thank you. I thank you for, for your support and for, for listening to me. Please talk about us. That's how you can help us right now. And if you know of an organization, or you belong to an organization that might benefit from this type of presentation, please don't hesitate to have them reach out because we would love to do that.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you very much, Kate, for presenting tonight, and we'll definitely see you again, okay?
Thank you.
So I'm gonna do a quick administrative change because the next person presenting is our communications officer. So I'm gonna remove item 10, the supplemental agenda item, approval of an intergovernmental agreement, intergovernmental agreement with the city of Eugene for standby medic unit to the front of the line. So who's gonna speak for that one? Is that you? Okay, thank you. I guess I was the wrong one. So come on up, please. Get you out of here too.
Okay. Good evening, council, mayor, and staff. The request this evening is to enter into an IGA with the city of Eugene for the possibility of providing medical services during the World Athletic Championships in Eugene, July 15th through the 24th. Eugene Springfield Fire Departments currently have all the required positions filled. They also have agreements in place with fire departments to the south of them for a backup plan should they need additional help. With the projected number of people attending the event, they wanted a additional contingency plan for additional personnel if needed. So they reached out to Corvallis, Lebanon, and to us. With council approval, and if we were requested, we would use off-duty personnel so there would be no impact to our daily staffing. And there would also be no cost to our department as we would be reimbursed by the city of Eugene for any associated overtime costs. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Okay, thank you. Would the council like to make a motion?
I would move to approve the agreement with the city of Eugene as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. Next on, next on tonight's agenda is a legislative and quasi-judicial public hearing regarding the fire, excuse me, files AN-02-22 and ZC-03-22. The proposal is annexation of 20 acre property with concurrent zoning map amendments to the residential single-family RS5 and residential medium-density RM zoning districts. The annexation will also remove the property from the taxing district of the rural, Albany Rural Fire Protection District. I call this, call to order this legislative, legislative quasi-judicial public hearing at 6:18 PM. If you wish to testify, there will be three options available which were described in, on the agenda. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Hearing none. Do any members wish to report an ex parte contact? Hearing none. Do any members wish to report a site visit?
It's in my neighborhood. I drive by it all the time.
Okay. Do any members wish to abstain from the participate, from participating in the proceedings? Everybody's in? Counsel Johnson, if she's there. Counsel Johnson, make sure I know you're there, okay? Thank you. Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or participation on the council member on the hearing and, and decision? If so, please raise your hand if you are attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand. Hand to be called upon. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. Give it a couple seconds. Nobody. At this time, I call for a reading of the meeting proceedings.
Thank you. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond, to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes, precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
At this time, I call for a staff report from project planner David Martino. Thank you, David, for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So this application is a request to annex a 20 acre parcel located north of Ellingson Road together with a request to apply the residential medium-density and the single-family residential zones to the property. The property is currently located within the urban growth area and is contiguous to the city limits on the east side. The property owner is Chad Curry, and the applicant is Roseanne Johnson with Lennar Northwest LLC. The map on the left shows that the property is designated urban residential reserve in the Albany Comprehensive Plan. The map on the right shows that the property is bordered by RS5 zoning to the east. That's the Henshaw Farms property that's presently under development. Property located to the north remains under Lynn County's jurisdiction and is zoned UGA-UGM 20. That property is owned by the city and is subject of a separate annexation request that will be considered by the council at the next hearing. So the process for an annexation with concurrent zone change is a legislative and quasi-judicial type IV process, and the decision-making criteria for annexations is found in section 2.110 of the Albany Development Code. And the zoning map amendment decision-making criteria is found in Development Code, section 2.740. Agency notice were sent out to those with jurisdiction, as well as public notices, both in the newspaper and posted on the property. The planning commission had a public hearing June 20th and unanimously recommended in favor of this annexation with concurrent zone change. And city council is vested with the authority to make the final decision. Each of the review criteria are addressed in the staff report that you have. So this annexation request meets all four criteria. The property is eligible to annex. It's timely to annex since the site has access to public streets and will have access to utilities. Adequate planning has occurred in terms of comprehensive plan map designation and anticipated future development. And it's also reasonable to annex provided that city council makes that determination. So the applicant, as I mentioned, is also applied for concurrent zone change for the property. This request was evaluated against zoning map amendment review criteria in the Development Code. According to the South Albany Area Plan, the Chad Curry property is designated for medium-density residential zoning to the north and west, and the remainder of the site is designated low-density residential zoning. The proposed RM and RS5 zones are consistent with those designations. Aroundabout is proposed for the intersection of Ellingson and Lochner Road, and by 2030, Ellingson will likely be improved for a two-lane travel and a center-turn lane. Eventually, the property will be served by a road network located north of Ellingson as illustrated in the South Albany Area Plan. So the notice of public hearing was mailed to property owners within 300 feet in May and in June when we sent out a revised notice. The staff report with exhibits was posted on the Planning Projects and Planning Commission homepage since June 6th. Democrat Herald notice was published June 3rd and June 10th, and then the site was posted June 13th at two locations. One midway across the property frontage on Ellingson Road, and the second one midway across property frontage on Lochner Road. As of 3:00 PM today, we have received no written comments. So the subject property is eligible for annexation as it's contiguous to the city limits. It's located in the Albany urban growth boundary, and it can be served by public services. With the annexation, the subject property will also be removed from the taxing district of the Albany Rural Fire Protection District. In conclusion, the staff analysis finds that the timely availability of utilities and infrastructure make the 20 acre property an ideal candidate for future development within the city. The requested RM and RS5 zoning designations is consistent with the South Albany Area Plan and the site's comprehensive plan designation of urban residential reserve. It's most likely that the site will be developed with a variety of housing choices ranging from single-dwelling units to middle housing to multifamily units. On balance, the evidence supports annexation and assigning the zoning designations of RM and RS5 to the subject property.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you very much, David. So do any council members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Thank you. We will now take testimony from the applicant. Will the applicant please state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the council? We have somebody from the applicant?
They should be on the call.
There, there they are.
Yep.
Both, um, Roseanne? Roseanne, I think you're, there you go, you're on now.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to defer to my colleague Wayne Hazen with Pioneer Design Group.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Hazen with Pioneer Design Group. My address is 9020 Southwest Washington Square Road, Portland, Oregon 97223. We don't have a, a presentation to give you tonight. We wanted to keep this brief, but we did want to express how excited we are, and Lennar in particular, to be working within the city of Albany, and also right adjacent to the Henshaw Farms property there. We are available for any questions that you may have. If you do have any questions or any additional information you would like to know. But otherwise, with that, I will turn it back over to you unless Roseanne has anything extra she wants to add. But thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and to hear the annexation application. Thank you.
Did you have anything for us, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I will just reiterate that we see a Curry annexation and zone map amendment before you as really an extension of the Henshaw Farms community that is being developed in your, within your city limits. And we were excited to continue to accommodate the housing needs within the city of Albany. So thank you.
Thank you. Do any council members have any questions for the applicant?
I, I do.
Counselor Novak?
Yeah, I have been hearing from a couple of constituents with regard to the annexation, and they're concerned about noise and traffic and the wildlife and things that will be affected with the annexation and development. So I just wanted to bring that to, I, I don't know, maybe they wrote to all of us and not just... just me, but I want to bring that before you all.
Then...
You can go ahead and address that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. What we're looking at here in terms of things like lighting, et cetera, obviously, we're within, within the boundaries of the South Albany Area Plan. So, within the, once the annexation takes place, we would be subject to city of Albany engineering standards. So, any street lighting, for example, would be designed in accordance with the adopted engineering standards. With regards to wildlife, what I would say there in terms of wildlife impacts, currently the, almost the entirety of the property is farmed. So, for the most part, it's regularly plowed. So, there is not a lot of vegetation on the property. You can see that there is the drainage that runs through the property bisects, the property from Lochner Road through to Ellingson Road, and there really isn't any associated vegetated corridor through there or associated buffer zones. So, I would, I would argue, and if you look at reports on that site, you can see that there is very limited wildlife habitat or limited wildlife values on the property at the present time with the annexation. And then, I know it's not for you tonight, but the subsequent subdivision, the proposal is that the drainage that you can see running through there will be preserved within a water quality, next to the water quality facility, sorry, and within a, within an open space tract. So, that will preserve the water quality in that area. It'll provide additional habitat through that area for wildlife within that vegetated corridor and help provide those corridors that wildlife tend to travel through. I think that will be a significant benefit in that area and certainly provide additional wildlife habitat than, than what is currently proposed. In terms of, in terms of noise, obviously, Lochner Road and Ellingson Road are significant roads within, within the city or proposed to be within the city. As far as impacts on residents of the development, the RM zone, which is those, the higher-density zones is to be located in that Lochner Road, Ellingson Road intersection area with the RS5 slightly larger lots and lower density as we move further east towards the Henshaw Farms property and adjacent to the, the City Park property. So, we do think that it is an appropriate site for this type of development. It has been planned for. It's been carefully designed to accommodate the types of housing that were proposed and planned for that area, and we do think that it does provide additional benefits in terms of wildlife habitat and protection than what the site is currently able to provide with, with its current use for farming purposes.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Hazen. Counsel Novak did answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Smith was next.
Thank you. I wasn't, wasn't going to ask this question now because there isn't a development proposal before us, but the door has been opened. So, I wanted to know about, speaking of wildlife and the drainage and so on, if the development, when we see it eventually, will accommodate the, the groves of trees on the property. They're quite significant.
Um, there, the, and sorry, again, because it's not before us tonight, we do have the natural resource impact assessment that is, has been prepared for the actual application. But it, it does find that there are no, there's no vegetation on the property that meets that significant natural resource test within the Albany Community Development Code. So, in terms of being able to provide for building envelopes, utility installation, and road development, there isn't the ability to retain those groves on the site. So, those, there will be enhancement plantings through that drainage corridor. The portion next to the house is the area where there is existing crossings or an existing crossing of that resource, and it's the point where the resource is the, where the drainage is the most, is the narrowest and has already been significantly, or most significantly impacted. And that is the point where a road is proposed to cross from the eastern portion of the site into that western corner, and that is also in the vicinity of the, of the primary grove that is on the property adjacent to the existing residents. So, the road is proposed to cross at that point to minimize impacts on the drainage area, and that does impact the ability to retain those, those oaks, I believe they are at that location.
Thank you for your forthright answer.
Thank you. If nothing else from the council, we will now be taking, Counsel Johnson, do you have anything for us? No? Okay, thank you. I'll make sure I check with her. We will now be taking public testimony, first from those in favor of the applications, followed by those in opposition to the applications with concerns or with concerns, and finally from anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter the exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to the email address provided in the agenda. Those who registered to speak during the meeting, we will now be called upon to present verbal testimony. So, no one signed up to speak on the register? So, I'm going down the next item on the agenda. We will now be taking public testimony from those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand if, if you're attending the meeting. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera, raise your hand, and to be called upon. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. Are there any hands raised? I don't see anyone coming up. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? Does any, does the, since no one rebutted, but I have to read this legally, does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony? Oh, excuse me, I missed the line. Does anyone, does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally of the application? And the next line would be, does the application, applicant have any rebuttal testimony? Okay.
Um, I, just to, sorry, Mayor, just to reiterate that Lennar is excited to be building homes within the city of Albany. We do believe that it is an appropriate use of the site and is consistent with the applicable approval criteria. And once again, thank you for your time in considering the application.
Thank you. Does anyone have procedural questions that would like to raise at this time? If so, please raise your hand if you're attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon, or if you have, if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. Nobody's raising their hand.
Mayor, step 20 is the opportunity for staff members to respond, if I could.
Oh, you're going, okay, go ahead, go and respond.
Okay. I will say this to Councilmember Smith's question about the trees. We do have provisions in our code to allow for cluster development to take place, and I would definitely advocate for that. I don't know yet what the site plan will look like with this proposed development, but I, I definitely would like to at least have the opportunity to work with the applicants to see whether a cluster development might be something that can be done.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And also, I, I wanted to clarify, thank you to Mr. Hazen for using the legal definition of significant. Significant, in my mind, are beautiful trees that I'm, I've seen there for 40-some years. So, there is a legal difference, and I, I accept that. But I like the idea of cluster development to take advantage of natural features on the site if possible. Thanks.
Thank you very much, David.
Thank you.
I declare this public hearing closed at 6:37 PM. Does the city council wish to discuss this case?
I do have a further question with regard to what Councilmember Smith just said about the trees.
We'll have to reopen the public hearing, wouldn't we?
Sorry, just missed my opportunity.
I am an attorney, and I will not play one on TV.
You can discuss it now, then.
I don't think you need to reopen the public hearing as long as it's not raising a new topic. It would be my guess.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel.
Same topic.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Jermaine, too, the last thing mentioned in my hearing, which was the trees.
Yes.
And the fact that there's a legal definition, and I did hear Mr. Hastings say something about it's not, you know, according to the legal definition, we're not harming anything, that there's nothing significant legally on that. So, I'm wondering, the trees are 100 years old, according to a constituent from whom I heard, and I wonder what actually makes something legally significant, if not 100 years plus of, I'm just curious, I just want to know so that I have more understanding.
So, David, would you like to address that?
I don't. I don't have a legal expertise to address that.
Okay.
I'll just say that the item might as just simply the annexation, not simple, but simply the annexation and the zone change. And when the development, through all the phases with David and community development, then probably, probably be an opportunity to get down into those types of details.
All right.
Counsel, anything else? Thank you, Counsel Novak. There are two ordinances for your consideration in your council packet. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance proclaiming annexation in title only?
Again, not the city attorney, but we checked Carter, and anyone can read the ordinance. So, that's me. An ordinance proclaiming annexation of a property identified on Lynn County Assessor's map number south, 11 south, 3 west, 29, as tax lot 401, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the city of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
That it? Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
Move so, move to read the title, read the motion second time in title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. Would the council like to make a motion?
Oh, wait, Mayor.
Go ahead.
An ordinance proclaiming annexation of a property identified on Lynn County Assessor's map, number 11 south, 3 west, 29, as tax lot 401, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Thank you very much. Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance proclaiming annexation?
Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Normally, I think we would read that, the whole motion that's on the, on the purple page, right?
Yes.
Okay. I move the city council adopt an ordinance that would approve the land use application for annexation with concurrent rezones to RS5 and RM under planning files AN0222 and ZCO322 as described in the June 6, 22, 2022 staff report. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report. Testimony presented at the hearings and the findings in support of the application made by the city council during deliberations on this matter.
Now, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? It says call for roll call vote, but I don't think I need to. Okay, thank you. An ordinance withdrawing, withdrawing property from the Albany Rural Fire District Protection District, would the city, would, would the Public Works Director read the ordinance withdrawing property from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District in title only?
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's map, number 11 south, 3 west, 29, as tax lot 401 from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
I move we have the ordinance read a second time in title only.
Second.
There's a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes.
An ordinance drawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's map, number 11 south, 3 west, 29, as tax lot 401 from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
That's a mouthful.
I move the city council adopt...
I gotta read, I gotta read it, though. Would a counselor like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance withdrawing property from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District?
I move the city council adopt an ordinance that would withdraw a 20-acre parcel located at 823 Ellingson Road Southeast from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. The decision of the city council, the decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal, appeal no later than 21 days after decision becomes final. Within five working days following the adoption of an amendment or a new land use regulation, the director shall forward it to the Department of Land Use, Land Conservation and Development, a copy of the adopted amendments and findings, and notify the Department of any substantial changes which may have occurred to the proposal since the previous notification of the department. Okay. Next on today's agenda, next on the agenda is a, is a legislative and quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning files Alpha November 03-22 and Zebra Charlie 05-22. The proposal is an annexation of a 26.61 acre parcel with the concurrent zoning map amendment to residential single-family RS5 zoning district. The annexation will also remove the property from the taxing district of the Albany Rural Fire Protection District. I call the, call to order the legislative quasi judicial public hearing at 6:45 PM. If you wish to testify, there will be three options available which were described on the agenda. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report an ex parte contact? Do any members wish to report a site visit? I drive by it every day, so that's pretty much it. I see it 25, 35 miles per hour. Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or participation in the council meeting, member in this hearing and decision? If so, please raise your hand if you are attending in person. If you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name and so you can be called upon. At this time, I call for a reading of the meeting procedures. David Martineau?
Thank you. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
At this time, I call for a staff report from project planner David Martineau.
Okay, there we go. So, the, this application is a request to annex...
So this application is a request to annex 26.61-acre unaddressed parcel that's located east of Lochner Road, together with a request to apply the RS5 single-family residential zone to the property. The property is currently located within the urban growth area and is contiguous to the city limits on the east side. The applicant is the City of Albany, represented by Parks and Recreation Director Kim LaDane. So the map on the left shows that the property is designated as urban residential reserve in the Albany Comprehensive Plan. The map on the right shows that the property is bordered by RS5 zoning to the east. Property to the north remains under Lynn County's jurisdiction and is zoned UGA, UGM 20. So annexations and zone changes, they're subject to the type 4 legislative and quasi judicial process. The decision-making criteria for annexations is found in the Development Code under Section 2.110, and zoning map amendments are found in the Development Code under Section 2.740. So agency notices were sent out to those with jurisdiction. Public notices were mailed to surrounding property owners and published in the newspaper as well as posted on site. The Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve unanimously at their June 20, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. And then ultimately, it's the city council's final decision on this.
Thank you.
So this annexation request meets all four criteria. The property is eligible to annex. It's timely to annex since the site has access to public streets and will have access to utilities. Adequate planning has occurred in terms of comprehensive plan map designation and anticipated future development. And it's reasonable to annex, provided that the city council makes that determination. So the applicants also applied to amend the zoning designation of the property. This request was evaluated against zoning map amendment review criteria, again in 2.740. The Albany Comprehensive Plan shows that the property is urban residential reserve. According to the 2013 South Albany Area Plan, the property was designated as a community park. More recently, the 2021 Park Master Plan states that the South Albany property was acquired to meet projected park needs in the area. The property is currently undeveloped, but there's wetlands on the site, and that will limit future uses when the site is developed as a park. However, the Parks Department believes that the site could still address neighborhood park needs in South Albany. The proposed zoning designation of the site is the RS5 residential single-family zone, and community parks are permitted in that zone with conditional use approval. So again, notice of public hearing went out to property owners within 300 feet in May and again in June. The staff report was posted online at the Planning Commission and the Planning Project's homepage since June 6. And Democrat Harold had notice published on June 3 and June 10. And then the site was posted in one location midway across the property frontage along Lochner Road. And as of 3 PM today, we've received no comments. So the subject property is eligible for annexation as it's contiguous to the city limits. It's located within the Albany urban growth boundary, and it can be served by public services. With the annexation, the subject property will also be removed from the taxing district of the Albany Rural Fire Protection District. In conclusion, the staff analysis finds that the availability of utilities and infrastructure make the 26.61-acre Parks property an ideal candidate for future development within the city. The requested RS5 zoning designation is consistent with the Parks Master Plan, South Albany Area Plan, and the site's Comprehensive Plan designation of urban residential reserve. So on balance, the evidence supports annexation and assigning the zoning designation of RS5 to the subject property.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Do any council members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Counselor Olson, make sounds, Kupczynski.
Yes, while there's no way to know what the future is actually going to bring, I would hope that there would be some way to, for lack of a better description, earmark some of that property for actual park. As per the South Albany Area Plan, I'd hate to see it be completely developed in housing. I mean, we need the housing, but if you're going to have a viable community, you also have to have some parks.
Yes. Counselor Smith?
I think I know the answer to that question. By zoning it for residential use, it makes it eligible to be used for park property. Is that correct?
It is correct, yes. And that is what's intended, at least in the updated Parks Master Plan, to at least have a community park at that location.
So I live over, if you keep going that way on Ellingson, I live over there in that neighborhood. And we have a huge park with a trail, and it's wonderful. People walk by my house every day from the cul-de-sac. So I'm hoping that not all of this would be, this is a pretty big spot for a park. But I hope it is created for a park so kids can play. You know, people can walk their dogs, people can spend time with family, so I'm looking forward to that. So thank you. So the council has nothing else? Okay.
Well, I do.
Go ahead, please. Counselor Olson.
Do we think we're going to have the wherewithal to develop a park in the near future?
Kim LaDane is out at the moment, but I do believe Rick Barnett might be on the call, and he's here to be able to answer that question, perhaps.
Can you join us, Rick?
Yeah, I am on the, I'm sneaking back from vacation for a few minutes here. Yeah, the idea is to build when it's appropriate with how housing hits in that part of town. So the plan is, I don't know how soon that would be. Won't be in the next few years. We have to have the development kind of happen around it. But that is definitely in the Parks Master Plan and in our plans.
Okay. Well, I'd like to agree with Ray that we should reserve a part of that property for a park and perhaps have it be kind of a, kind of a rough, rough ground kind of park. Maybe not totally developed, but I think reserved to have a park there. I'd like to agree with that.
Yeah, and I think that's the plan at this point, based on our master plan. The park was purchased, it was farmland, it's farmed now. It was purchased looking to the future. We didn't know what we were going to do with it, and at this point, we know we don't have the wherewithal to develop 26 acres. But more like 2 and 1/2, 3, and something like that is what we've discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that. We will now take testimony from the applicant, which is the City of Albany. Would the applicant please state his name and make comments that may for the council? You got it?
I have nothing further unless Rick does.
You have anything else, Rick? No, he's done, he's gone.
No, I don't.
Any council members have questions of the applicant?
So my only question, because everyone knows, you know, we're all in favor of making things livable, and we all love parks, and we all want things beautiful. I just, my only concern is that we're considering a way to maintain this as-yet undeveloped park, that that's part of the plan, is the maintenance of said park.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Smith.
To Counselor Novak's concern, my understanding is that this property would continue to be farmed, as it is now. And parks' maintenance would not be part of the equation until it is developed as a park.
Right, I'm referring to when we have a park, we're going to be able to maintain it. That's all I'm asking. I know right now it's not a park. Thank you.
Okay, I'm guessing there's no more questions for the applicant? That's us, by the way. Okay. We will now take public testimony, first from those in favor of the applicant's applications, followed by those in oppositions with concerns, and finally, from anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to the address provided in the agenda. Those who registered to speak during, is there, Allison, is there another sheet? Okay. Those who registered to speak during the meeting will now be called upon to testify verbally. I did not receive any applications to sign up and speak. We will now be taking public testimony from those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand if you are attending in person. If you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. I saw none. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Nobody online. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally of the application? Does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have procedural questions that would like to raise at this time? If so, please raise your hand if you are attending in person. If you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. I declare this public hearing closed at 6:58 PM. Does the city council wish to discuss this case? Counselor Olson?
I've got a question. We're talking about annexing this piece of property to use it as a park. But it looks like from the comment we get from the Parks man, only looking like using about 10% of it for a park, perhaps. And we don't have the wherewithal to develop it at the present time. I'm wondering, why are we annexing this piece of property at the present time? Well, what's the excuse, the driving force? Nobody's requesting it, is it? Are they?
Where?
Other than somebody citywide here, I guess.
David?
I can try to answer that question, but I'm not sure if it means having to reopen the public hearing or not.
Well, I would.
I think the opportunity to annex this property coincided with the annexation of the property just to the south, the Curry property. And so there is kind of an economy of scale when you have those properties coming in at the same time, when it comes time for extension of utilities. So I think that the Parks Department considered all of that, and they thought that this was the right time to try to annex that property.
So you're talking about water, power, sewer?
Yes.
Okay. But we're not talking about filling it up with apartment houses?
No, there's no plans like that that I've heard of at all. The only thing that I was certain of on this one is simply that the Parks Department does intend to use a portion of that property as a community park.
Okay. Thank you. Any other counsel?
So would we have to annex it in order to put the water and the power and the sewer through it?
Yeah, to get urban services that would need to be in the city limits, that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Good. Thank you. Got your question answered? You're good. Thank you. There are two ordinances for your consideration in your counsel packet. Would the director please read the ordinance proclaiming annexation in title only?
An ordinance proclaiming annexation of a property identified on Lynn County Assessor's map, number 11 South, 3 West, 29, as tax lot 42, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
I move we have the ordinance read a second time in title only.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Can we do a roll call, please? I didn't hear everybody's voice.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Yes.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Counselor Novak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would the council like to make a motion?
Oh, Mayor?
Yes.
I have to read it.
We got to read it, sorry. I'm going to have myself.
That's okay. An ordinance proclaiming annexation of a property identified on Lynn County Assessor's map, number 11 South, 3 West, 29, as tax lot 402, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance proclaiming annexation?
I move the city council to adopt an ordinance that would approve the land use application for annexation with concurrent rezone to RS5 under planning files AN 0322 and ZC 0522, as described in the June 6, 2022 staff report. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report. Testimony presented at the hearings and the findings in support of the application made by the city council during deliberations on this matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have motion and a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed say no? Motion passes? Okay, let me go to the next one. Would the city director please read the ordinance withdrawing property from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District in title only?
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's, number 11 South, 3 West, 29, as tax lot 402 from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
I move that we read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes, Director?
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's map, number 11 South, 3 West, 29, as tax lot 402 from the Albany Fire Protection District.
Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance withdrawing property from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District?
I move the city council to adopt an ordinance that would withdraw a 26.61-acre parcel located north of 823 Ellingson Road southeast from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. The decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal no later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following the adoption of the amendment or new land use regulation, the director shall forward the department, to the Department of Land Conservation and Development, a copy of the adopted amendments and findings, and notify the Department of any substantial changes which may have occurred in the proposal since the previous notification to the department. Okay, now we're going back to the normal agenda. Next on the agenda is a quasi judicial public hearing regarding the planning files Charlie Papa 02-22 and Zebra Charlie 04-22. The proposal is a Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendment specific for four lots totaling 2.25 acres inside the city limits. I call to order this quasi judicial public hearing at 7:06 PM. If you wish to testify, there are three options available, which were described in the agenda. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Counselor Johnson? Do any members wish to declare an ex parte contact? Do any members wish to report a site visit?
Many times.
Many times. Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any council member in this hearing and decision? If so, please raise your hand if you are attending in person. If you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. At this time, I call for reading other meeting procedures.
For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue recludes an action for damages in circuit court.
Thank you, David. At this time, I call for a staff report from project planner David Martino.
Well, good evening once again.
This is David's meeting.
Trifecta. So this application is a request to amend the comprehensive plan designation from light commercial to general commercial and change the zoning on the parcels totaling 2.25 acres from neighborhood commercial to community commercial on property located on several addresses, but in particular 1016 Queen Avenue Southeast. The applicant is Cordell Post, represented by land use consultant Laura LaRocque of Udell Engineering and Land Surveying. So the properties in question have a comprehensive plan map designation of light commercial. The only zones that are compatible with that designation are the neighborhood commercial and office professional zones. Properties to the east and west are designated light commercial with medium density residential to the south and low density residential to the north. So having property designated community commercial near major intersections that are surrounded by light commercial and residential plan designations is not without precedence. Here are just two examples showing comparable designations. Here's, the one on the left is at Queen and Geary, and then the one on the right is Grand Prairie at Geary. So surrounding land uses here, west of the site is a city water reservoir facility and a church. Then there's a bakery to the northwest across Queen Avenue. Adjacent to the subject property is a pizza restaurant and La Roca Mexican Restaurant. There's a car wash located to the east and a single family residences are located to the north and then further to the east. So the decision making criteria for a type four process, this is a quasi judicial process, the comprehensive plan amendment criteria can be found in our development code in section 2.220 sub 3. And then the zoning map amendment language is found in development code section 2.740. So agencies were sent notice, public notices were provided on site as well as surrounding property owners. The planning commission had a unanimous recommendation at their June 20, 2022 public hearing. And then ultimately, it's up to city council to consider for a final decision. So again, public notice regarding this was provided to property owners within 300 feet on May 23 and June 13. Staff report with exhibits was posted online since June 6. The property was posted on June 13 at two locations. One along the Hill Street frontage and the other along Queen Avenue frontage. And as of time of this hearing, no written comments were received. So in conclusion, the staff analysis finds that the evidence supports the contention that the subject property is best suited for the requested general commercial plan designation and community commercial zoning designation. As proposed, this application satisfies all of the applicable review criteria as outlined in this report. Therefore, the planning commission and staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any council members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Go ahead, Counselor Johnson. I see you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. From what I could gather is that there are just some uses in this like strip mall type thing that if it was, if it were to go in now, it wouldn't qualify. Is that correct? So this is gonna just kind of like have the continuity so everything is acceptable, is that correct?
Yeah, so this retail center was constructed over 60 years ago. And so the, the type of development that a retail center provides tends to be those that are more in the community commercial. You know, you think about Periwinkle Plaza, for instance. You know, neighborhood commercial tends to be one or a couple of small businesses like a convenience store or maybe a coffee shop, something like that. So the character of this property for many, many years has been typically more of a community commercial nature as opposed to neighborhood commercial. And that's why the property owner wanted to just pursue the zone change to make it a better fit for what's already there.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
That cleared up a lot for me too, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any council have anything else? Thank you. I'm gonna go and move on. We will now take testimony from the applicant. Will the applicant please state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the council?
Good evening, my name is Laura LaRocque with Udell Engineering, address is 63 East Bass Street in Lebanon, Oregon. And joining me this evening is Cordell Post, the owner of the property. I will defer to Cordell for him to speak or add what he would like to it. And then I would be happy to wrap up and answer any questions council has.
Hello, Cordell. Hello, Laura.
Hi there.
Sir, you have the floor.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, we're just doing this to, to catch up the zoning to what's actually there. And it's been on my list for four or five years to do it. And this is one of my New Year's resolutions is to get this done. So that's why it's before you. Nothing is changing with respect to the tenants that are in the building. So nothing's changing there.
Laura, do you have anything else? Thank you to Cordell.
Yeah, I do not. Just thank you, just to have to give a very thorough presentation. I think they addressed all the critical pieces of the application and did a great overview of all the questions before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. So do any council members have questions for the applicant? Everybody's not saying no.
I just have a comment.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you for doing this. I like sensible applications that clean up things that should be cleaned up. It's, it's, well, you're putting the right name on the, on the package, so thank you.
Yeah.
And your wishlist, your New Year's resolution is a long list because it's July. So thank you.
You're getting it done. He's getting it done.
Yeah, he's getting it done. Great job. We will now be taking public testimony first from the people and those in favor of the applications, followed by those in opposition or with concerns, and finally from anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to the address provided in the packet. Those who registered to speak during this meeting will now be called upon to present testimony. There's no one signed up to speak. We will now be taking public testimony for those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand if you are attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. No hands? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally of the application? Does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony?
We have none. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
None from me either, thank you.
Does anyone have procedural questions that would raise at this, that they would raise at this time? If so, please raise your hand if you are attending in person. If you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. Or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. I see any? I declare this public hearing closed at 7:16 PM. Does the council member wish to discuss this case? There is an ordinance for your consideration in the council packet. Would the, would the director please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany comprehensive plan map, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany comprehensive plan and zoning map and adopting findings for the property located at Lynn County Assessor's map number 11 south, three west, 07 DD tax lots 3700, 3801, 3802, and 4301.
Thank you, Director. Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
I move that we read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
I have a motion on the second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Director?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4836, which adopted the City of Albany comprehensive plan map, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map by amending the Albany comprehensive plan and zoning map and adopting findings for the property located at Lynn County Assessor's map number 11 south, three west, 07 DD tax lots 3700, 3801, 3802, and 4301.
Thank you very much, Director. Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I move the city council adopt an ordinance that would approve the comprehensive plan map amendment with concurrent rezone to CC under planning files CP0222 and ZCO422 as described in the June 6, 2022 staff report. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report, testimony presented at the hearing, and the findings in support of the application made by the city council during deliberations on this matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion on the second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. The decision of the city council may, may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal nullified in 21 days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following the adoption of the amendment or new land use regulation, the director shall forward the Department of Land Use Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted amendments and findings to notify the Department of any substantial changes which may have a, have occurred in the proposed, proposal since the previous notification to the department. Thank you very much for the patience.
Thank you all.
Thank you, David. Next is business from the public on the agenda. Persons writing, wanting to provide testimony during the public, excuse me, I'm going way too far. Persons wanting to provide comments may submit written comments and/or register to speak at the city's website before noon of the day of the meeting or appear in person at the meeting and register to speak using the sign up sheet. We've had several people sign up. Okay. We have no one submitted written material for tonight's meeting. However, two people signed up earlier, previously signed up, a Mark and Jessica Wang and Carol Davies. And then we had several people sign up to speak. And we're gonna go three minutes apiece. It can move things along and we'll reserve questions till at the end of your, your talk. So first up on the agenda is Mark and Jessica Wang. Are they on virtual? Are they here? Carol Davies? Oh, Mark's, Mark's online, okay. Well, is Mark online? Was he on the phone? Mark, Mr. Wang? There you are. So Mark and Jessica, you go first, please.
Hi, thank you for having us. We wanted to just, I guess, voice our opinion on the easement that was granted for Curtis Sorte, I believe. It will directly impact our neighborhood and, and the environment around our neighborhood. And for us, the main reason that we purchased our home was that we are up against a nature trail and the, the animals that are here, the nature that's here. And we're really concerned about the environmental impact. And a little taken aback that this was denied several times because of the risk of the environmental impact. And then to be told that it was granted under the consideration that, you know, that he would, you know, do his best to not have it impact things. I mean, to clear 80 trees that are, you know, up to 100 years old. And, you know, there are birds that nest here throughout the year and, you know, cranes that land here and all sorts of wildlife here. And the effect that that may have, that in and of itself, I think, is reason to pause this and do an environmental impact survey and find out the risks that are involved in doing this. And I'm very confused as to why he needs a 27 foot wide driveway when the average driveway is 10 to 12 feet. And that's the size of a road, not a driveway. So to say that we're, you know, considering the environment and the impact that it has, but to, you know, almost go three times the size necessary for a driveway just doesn't seem necessary or beneficial to our community or to the environment.
That it?
No. If you have anything to add?
Thank you. Is David still here? He walked out. I know, I believe it's in pre-app. He hasn't actually, is he coming back? Who was there? Oh, Matthew's online. My director, the city community development director, Matthew Rutgers is online. Matt, you're muted. There you go.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Counselors. So yeah, I can actually respond to that. So the, the easement that was granted is, is just a legal access. Now, as part of that easement, Mr. Sorte is actually required to go through a land use process. And that is, that land use process is designed, is actually designed to evaluate any and all impacts. They just had a pre-application meeting. So they're at the very, very, very start of this. We don't even have a formal application yet. So when that application comes in, it will go through a, a standard process that we'll, we will be evaluating. It'll actually look what's referred to as a natural resource application. And that's gonna involve wetlands, it'll involve any of the impacts to trees as well as floodplain, floodway, and any environmental concerns. So it's a, this is, it's not a simple process. It'll actually go before planning commission for a decision. So we're at the very early stages of them being able to do anything out there. Again, we don't, we don't even have a formal application at this time.
And so wouldn't the neighbors be noticed so they can give input?
Correct. With the, the type three process that this will go through, there will be a, a notice, basically a public notice that's put out, notice of filing for the application itself. And that will open up a, a comment period for neighbors or interested parties to provide comment. And when it goes to planning commission for a decision, there'll actually be an opportunity, just like we saw tonight with public hearings, for people to come in and testify for, either for, against, or neutral to the application.
Does that help?
Okay, thank you very much.
That does help? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming and bringing that to our attention. Really do appreciate it. We increase, we encourage participation in our meetings, so thank you for that. So next I'll go to Carol Davies. Thank you very much. Three minutes, please.
Evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight as a representative of COE, the Community Outreach Assistance Team. I wanted to give you a report about an ongoing and increasing crisis that's been happening. As expected, we continue to see more unhoused people in Albany. Both of the shelters are currently full and the shelters in Benton County are also full. The Helping Hand Shelter is on an indefinite pause because they have so many people who are medically fragile. They don't have the staff to accommodate any more people. This is also what I've been seeing. A lot of elderly people and medically fragile people, many who are living in their vehicles or their RVs. The owners of the parking lots in Albany have increasingly been prohibiting overnight camping. The I-5 rest area requires people to move every 12 hours. There's a crackdown on overnight stays at all of the parks, parking lots. People need somewhere to be able to park for the night because there's nowhere else for them to go. One of the other complicating factors that's happening here that I wanted you to be aware of is the Albany Police Department have been conducting sweeps through the area parks. Again, displacing these people who have nowhere to go because the shelters are all full. who have nowhere to go because the shelters are all full. And this is something that has reached a critical stage. And I'm asking you to give some thought as to what we can do, how we can create safe overnight places for people to be able to park while we're hopefully building some more affordable housing for them. I would love to hear from Council members and the Mayor about possible solutions. What can we do to address this issue? I'd like to thank you very much for allowing me to speak again, and I hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you. So part of, what I would invite you to do is, the Housing Affordability Task Force is, we talked about this issue. So I'd love to hear, have you come and share with that, with us in our next meeting.
I would love to do that, Mayor, if you could let me know when it is.
I will. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So next up will be Rebecca Bond, our Albany Visitor, Executive Director, Albany Visitors Association.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all. Thanks for the opportunity to come and visit with you and give you a little update. My name's Rebecca Bond. I live at 35440 Riverside Drive, Southwest, Albany, Oregon. Too close?
No, right in front of you.
Right in front of me?
Yeah.
Okay. And my office is at 110 Third Avenue Southeast, at least for the next year. We have the new official visitor guide for you tonight, and we printed them early this year because we were running out of the 2021 guide. Last year we printed 25,000. And so this year we went ahead and printed 35,000. And printing prices have gone up by 20%. But we have found the guide to be very popular. And it is distributed throughout Oregon at welcome centers, visitor centers, chambers, PDX, as well as points of interest throughout Salem. This summer we added the Eugene distribution with the influx of international visitors. And we also send it through direct mail to requests through our partners at Travel Oregon and the Willamette Valley Visitors Association. And we have kiosks throughout Albany at all our hotels, the train station, the Expo Center, the Albany Chamber, the Albany Downtown Association. Overall, we spend about $20,000 on distribution of the visitor guide each year. And we also have the guide available for free digitally on our website and on our Albany Explorer app, which is also free. So we're also excited to share with you some collateral we got from Travel Oregon for the Oregon 22 World Athletics Championships that are being held at Hayward Field. And we ordered special signs for Albany and distributed them to all the Albany Hotels this week. We've been working with Albany Area Chamber and the Albany Downtown Association to distribute them to businesses throughout the community. And we're hanging banners throughout the community. So hopefully those will be up by tomorrow night, all the banners. And for those who are unfamiliar with Oregon 22, the 2022 World Athletics Championships are coming to Oregon this Friday. Many people are already here, but the event runs from July 15 through the 24th. Nearly 2,000 of the world's greatest athletes, representing more than 200 nations, are traveling to Eugene, Oregon to compete in this unprecedented event happening at Hayward Field. And this will mark the first time the U.S. will host this elite global sporting event. Albany Hotels are filling up too, both with guests for the event and from compression as the Valley Hotels are filling up quickly. Visitors and event spectators will want to venture out and explore many other wonderful destinations in Oregon and throughout the Willamette Valley. There are many reasons why runners and sports fans love to travel here. There are abundance of natural running and hiking trails, temperate weather and beauty that can be found anywhere else in the country. We use part of our share of the state's regional tourism dollars to purchase signs on the window of Oregon Traveling Tours vehicles, which are transporting guests from PDX to Hayward Field and throughout the valley. I have photos here I can show you as well. They've already made several trips to and from PDX, and we're thrilled at how they turned out. And we are also providing samples from our Mid-Willamette Valley Food Trail Partners this weekend to media coming to Oregon 22. There are 700 media representatives expected from all over the world. We're excited for the opportunity to provide them a taste of Oregon and an invitation to come to Albany. Thank you again for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Council? And we, I had talked to her earlier, so she knew I was, I knew she was going to go over, so thank you.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Please.
I just want to say thanks, Rebecca, for everything you're doing to put Albany on the map, to direct some of that wonderful traffic from everywhere around the world here. Appreciate you.
Is it okay to pass these out?
Yes, go ahead.
Or I can leave them at the end?
You can go ahead and pass them on to the Council. We're moving along, okay. So next up on the agenda, the business from the public is our Director of Downtown Association, Lisa Grotto. Thank you.
Thank you.
Restart the clock, please.
As you can see, Rebecca and I work together frequently. My name is Lisa Grotto. I'm the Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association, and I'm just going to do a quick downtown update. Our movies at Montith lineup is finally set. We asked the public what they wanted to see, and a little surprised, Poltergeist will be our first movie.
Really?
So we will be making sure that we publicly announce, sharing tonight and other times, that this is not a kid-friendly movie for most families. So we will not have kid activities that evening, but we will, delighted that over 200 people participated in our survey, and that was one of the ones they selected. The other one was Annie. If you don't know, both these movies came from 1982. We provided them two other options, Tron and Tootsie. And then the association, our promotion committee, selected The Dark Crystal and Star Trek II: The Wrath of Khan. The reason for the 1982 movies is it's our birthday. So all year long we'll be celebrating things from the last 40 years. So that was how we made our movie selection this year. So we hope you have occasion to join us and enjoy local food from area restaurants that are set up as our vendors, as well as popcorn and candy from the picks. And the scouts come down and take care of candy and refreshments. So we invite you to join us Friday nights at Montith Park, starting July 22. Also wanted to let you know that the latest issue of the downtown newsletter celebrates breakfast spots in downtown. So lots of breakfast spots to choose from. It also includes a calendar, a little bit of a parking update. And then the Visitors Association is having their Summer Historic Home Tour on July 30. She says I'm, she says I'm right. And we're also looking for volunteers to help with our movies. And we invite you to join us at Albany Alley, which is our public dining space, which this year is located next to the iconic Red Caboose. It's convenient to people who are visiting the farmer's market. I've seen people enjoy strawberries and pizzas, some of the crepes now that you can find there, and other fun things, as well as it being right out the back door of margin coffee and natural sprinkles. We'll see people there. And of course, families, dogs, and visitors and locals are all welcome. We have about 25 restaurants downtown. So grab something and go enjoy a Saturday from 9:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night. So I think that's all I have, and I'll give you back 16, 14, 13 minutes.
Thank you, Director. I appreciate it. She's still on me 30 over there, Rebecca. Thank you very much for your report. Next on the agenda is, please forgive me if I pronounce your name incorrectly, Lonnie Rowig, Rowig. And it's about Row, Wyman Street.
I'm Lonnie Rowig. I have been living in the same house on 633 7th and Wyman Street.
Put the mic in front of this. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm very hard of hearing. I haven't understood my 10 words you've said.
Okay.
I bought this house in 1984, November of 84. It's, I was very surprised when I got this deal, that I was told to vacate. I guess you had an inspection and you didn't have the courtesy to come to me and tell me what was going on. I'm usually at home because I'm retired. The house was built between '47 and '49 by Dr. Wade. He had a variance of some kind with the Pacific Power, I believe, that owned the canal at that time. And so the house has been there for 73 years. It hasn't changed anything other than I planted some trees on the canal to stabilize the bank. I keep, always kept the bank clean, and I dug out from behind the barricade on the canal, backfilled it, put the plank, put the planks in correct and backfilled them. And then I put, planted trees to stabilize it. It concurred that when I planted the trees, it was when Albany got the City of Trees Award. I've been there 37 years. I've maintained the whole side of that canal and everything. When Jonathan Crow, Deputy District Attorney, lived across the canal from me, he told me in conversation when we were visiting one day, that I should have a variance or have you apply to the city for a vacation on the property. And I never did do it. And I would like to have you look at this again. I've had Dick Olson over and look. The prop, my foundation is a property line. My soffit of my house is two feet over the property line. The sidewalk is over on, next to the house. The service panel, I don't know how I protect it. If we opened up a street, I would have to put bollards all the way along that property to protect my house. And I'd like to have you to revisit it. I would love to have all of you come to my house and look at it.
So, sir, I think that our Public Works Director could-
I can't hear you.
Our Public Works Director, Chris Bailey, is over here. Would you like to respond?
If I could just get your street address, we'll have somebody come by and talk with you.
633 Southwest 7th.
Okay.
Now, I've already had Gordon Steffenmeyer came and looked at it, the city engineer. And he didn't see any sense in taking the trees out or anything else. But we didn't know how to approach protecting the house when it's against the street, if they put a drive. It would be great to have a walkthrough.
Sure.
But I cannot, I don't know how I'm going to protect my house.
Right now, the direction we have is not, we're not going to be building a road through there. What we're trying to do is have those property owners that have built structures or parked personal property in the right of way, remove that property. So if Gordon has told you that there's nothing that needs to be done right now, then that's where it lies.
I built a shed in my shop, which used to be behind the old plumber, Tumalum lumber. I put it on my trailer, hauled it over and set it down. I'm a carpenter by trade.
Cool.
I moved the trailer, that eight by 16 utility shed, four times in my yard. I moved it back. I moved it back a little further. I moved it and turned it, put it more behind the house. My wife wanted raised beds, so I slid it over toward the canal. And it also helped because the people behind us, when they moved into 96, just let it go to pieces back there. We used to have great neighbors before that, and people come in in 96. But I complained about the blackberries and everything that they didn't control in over there in the right of way and in their yard. And I was told that they liked blackberries.
Well, we'll come out and talk with you again. If there's something that needs to be moved, we'll work with you to give you time to do that. But if it's just trees, then it won't be a problem.
Well, the trees, there was, when I bought the house, there was an apple tree right in the middle of that right of way, probably 10 feet back in back of the original garage. I accidentally killed it by over fertilizing and putting bark dust too high on the trunk, and it died. And there was a big fir tree that was about four feet over on the right of way. And I made an application with the city to cut it down because it was over three feet in diameter and four feet high.
Mm-hmm.
Because it was getting to a point, big limbs were falling down. And somebody got hurt, so I had it removed. So I don't know what to tell you. I know I still, when I bought the house, I was removing sprinkler systems next to the canal fence that Dr. Wade had put in for his roses. And I think some of that pipe is still buried in there because it was 3/4 inch galvanized pipe. I'm just asking for people, I was not notified, I don't feel. I don't take the paper for the simple reason it's too expensive for what they get. And all I want is either a continuance so I can get more time to move. I've had Dick Olson over and looked at it. He knows what I'm up against.
And so, sir, our Director Bailey will be coming out, or one of her folks will be out to talk with you.
I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. No, I thank you for, I really appreciate your input. First time I've seen you, so thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Jim James?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jim, for coming out.
Council members. Anyway, the reason I'm here is to discuss the homeless problem. I've talked to you before, and I've talked to Matilda several times. Anyway, I live at 624 Northeast. My backyard borders the graveyard. And I've had homeless people have just taken over the back corner of the graveyard. And we're, I'm afraid for myself and my family, you know, even to go out in the backyard. And I don't see anything getting done.
Well, I did, I'm glad I remember your name now because we talked on the phone. I went out to your property, and I think I pulled in front of your property, and I couldn't-
You pulled in front? You were-
I just went to the address you gave me, that's all I did. But I did refer to the police department, and so I'm sure Council no-
And I did mention both to you, sir, and to Chief Harndon, that the issue is in the backyard, which borders the Jewish cemetery, not in front of the house.
When I went out there that day, I was wearing dress clothes, and I wasn't going to walk out in the cemetery with my Spencer shoes on, so I still-
Oh, I would have gladly taken you back there and showed you what we're up against because, I mean, I've got a bunch of pictures I'd like to share with you guys, but-
Can you please make sure we get a copy of those, or give them to her?
Yeah, you can. I'll give them to you, and you can, you can keep them.
Can you give them to the city clerk, please?
Sure.
And she'll make sure we get a copy of them.
There's three of them. That's my backyard, and then the rest are-
So I do appreciate you coming in.
Well, the thing is, we're, you know, I've been there for 31 years. We've raised three children there. And, you know, we're afraid to be out in the backyard now.
That's unacceptable.
And those pictures will show you, well, they won't show you everything, but they're- they're defecating right on the other side of our fence. And, you know, the, the, the words you hear across the fence is just, I don't know, I'm, I don't want to be right here right now, but I want you guys to know what we're up against because this is, uh,
Chief, is there anything-
It's unbelievable.
Is there anything that we can talk, speak to or?
Yeah, Mr. James, we haven't met personally, but, uh, I, I do get regular reports from my staff on it. Um, and for the council and Mr. James, the cemetery is considered private property. Uh, we do have permission to go on there and make arrests and, and take enforcement action. Uh, and they have given us authority to do that and we're out there on a daily, if not weekly, basis. The, the challenge we're having currently is that we need them to clear out that, um, those blackberry bushes and the areas in which the encampments can hide. And until that is done, we're going to continue to see a resurgence there. So, uh, Sergeant Jones and our code compliance officer are leaning on the property owners a little bit to try to take some action, or the city will take some action against them to get it done.
I just talked to him yesterday and he has not, he, he keep, every time I talk to him, he says, he's waiting to hear back from the people that's supposed to clean that up. Well, that's been, that's been going on for months.
Well, uh, the code compliance officer, Chris Chanel, will be back from vacation next week. And it is, is on the property owner to do it. And if we don't see action, then the city will, uh, up the pressure to take some action.
Well, that, that's what I'm hoping they will do because I, I don't see him doing anything.
Yeah.
So, so the property owner's been notified of this issue?
Correct. We're working with them.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Please.
So my question, one of my questions is, how long does a property owner have to come into compliance, especially in a situation where people are actually afraid? Um, they don't take their grandchildren in the backyard and they're afraid to go to the greenhouse. You know, um, Mr. James explained to me that his wife won't go back there without him. Um, you know, every day-
My, my mother's got a greenhouse, she won't even walk back there by herself.
So how long do people have to come into compliance once they've been notified that they have an issue? And he says there's three tents back there now, not just one.
Correct. It, it is, it seems like, uh, glacial speed, but there is due process for the, the owners of these properties. Uh, the council's heard about some legal action we've had to take on other properties and it does take a while. Meantime, uh, the minute that anything's occurring back there, uh, we'd encourage you to call nine-one-one, we'll come out. And, and we proactively come out on a regular basis at the request of the property owner as well. So we will continue to do that.
I called them the last time because they were having a party or something out there. I mean, we heard noise, bottles throwing, you know, people burping and, uh, and I went back there when the police showed up and alls I heard was, are you guys having a barbecue? You know, they burn stuff back there. While the police were there, somebody jumped over, climbed over my fence, ran across my yard. I, I'd heard them, but I went in to get a light. Then they were, they weren't there, but the next day, my grandson found the, the pair of underwear, women's underwear on the fence. And then there's a, a hypodermic needle right there by it and a pipe and, I mean, just stuff you don't want your grandkids to see.
I absolutely hear what you're trying to, uh, what you're saying. Uh, and again, the direction is that we go out there proactively, whether you call us or not, to take enforcement action. We've made a number of arrests, trying to get, uh, the, the rest of the system to, to hold people accountable. It's a little bit of a frustration, uh, but we'll continue to arrest where we need to make arrests. And that is, they don't, they don't get to walk on anything. They get cited or arrested each and every time they're in there.
Well, they've trespassed on my property and that, I've been told that if I call them, they'll come and get them with, I mean, they, they go on the property, they're, they're gone when somebody, you know, they, they come over there at night. You know, when we're asleep, I don't know if they're getting water in our backyard or, uh, I don't know. I mean, I, I know they're, I guess, I guess what my question is, is how long is the graveyard going to be allowed to let, let this stuff grow? So they, I mean, this camp is getting bigger and bigger on the other side of the graveyard. There's, there's, it's a huge camp.
When, when, uh, Chris Chanel gets back next week, I'll have him contact you and give you an update on where we are with, uh, pressuring the property owners. Yep.
Okay.
And I would like to come out myself, so I'll, I'll reach out to you tomorrow and set up a time to come out.
You're very welcome to.
Any council like to join me?
I can't tomorrow because we're open for business, but I, maybe this weekend if I can, Mr. James, I'll come by. I mean, I've seen a lot of pictures, more than everyone else and, uh-
I've got plenty more.
So, sir, so Jim, I'll give you a call and set up a time and I'm sure other councils would like to come because I, I totally understand what you're going through. I've gone to several places and people are upset about this type of behavior. And so we need to, we'll work with you on it, we'll figure it out.
I just, I just don't want me or someone in my family to have to get hurt
Right.
for something to get done, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Roger Snell?
Appreciate you letting me share my three minutes. And, uh, mine's kind of a segue, uh, onto what Mr. James was, uh, talking about. I moved to Albany about, uh, six years ago and I live in the same neighborhood and I, uh, after work, I like to walk my dog.
Can you please move the mic up to your mouth and speak into it?
Sure.
Yes.
Uh, after work, I like to walk my dog, uh, in that area through, uh, through Simpson Trail. Uh, I don't know if you folks are familiar with Simpson Trail, but it's, uh, progressively getting worse with, uh, very sophisticated, uh, homeless encampments. Um, they, uh, actually have, uh, canoes where they're, um, hauling their firewood and, uh, their, uh, uh, essentials, uh, into their, their camps. Um, and I've, through the years, I've, uh, called the police multiple times. I've, I've notified, uh, you, Mayor, um, through email and, uh, Matilda, uh, has helped me out quite a bit, um, and has supported me quite a bit. Um, but, uh, there's hypodermic needles, there's feces, uh, there's, uh, female hygiene products, there's rotten food all along the trail. Uh, there's people that are, uh, are out of their minds screaming, uh, kids are, are scared. Uh, I feel uncomfortable. Um, I've had many confrontations. Matter of fact, I've been subpoenaed to court because there was a guy with an, wielding an axe and I had to call the police. He actually hit somebody in the head with an axe. Um, and I just want to know, um, they're defecating all along the, um, yeah, the, the river, the floodplain area in the river there, and they're also burning wood. There's a sign that says that no camping, no overnight staying, there's, um, no, no fires. And, um, for years now, it's been going on. And I'm just wondering if, uh, we're ever going to be able to address this situation once and for all. Uh, Simpson Trail.
Simpson Trail? I'll put it on the list. Chief, do you have a comment?
Apparently I don't know technology very well. Uh, yeah, we were, I would say, uh, just out in Simpson Park, Talking Waters, over the last, uh, probably year or so, uh, and made contact with a number of the folks out there. Uh, our stance is and will continue to be, uh, giving them opportunities to get resources and giving them warnings and then when there's no compliance, then we take enforcement measures to remove the camps from the park. Um, and that is, I will be honest with you, that is, uh, an uphill battle in some respects. Um, so there, I only have so much staff and sixty thousand other people in the city, but we do it the best we can, particularly in the summertime. It's, it's really helpful for us if we, uh, know specific parts, because the park's large. Uh, if you see something or you see, uh, people in there that you drop a pin on your map on your phone and then Sergeant Jones can go and at least make contact with them and see if we can get them to voluntarily relocate. If not, then, uh, take enforcement action as we need to. But again, we start with, with services, we start with warnings and then we move to enforcement. But we're getting to the point, and I would agree with, uh, some of the comments tonight, that it's becoming a bigger and bigger issue.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I agree with the comments, we have a lot of work to do. Um, the state, country, several states have same issues or more than us. And it's, um, this is disheartening when I get ten, fifteen messages a day with pictures and imagery of things like this happening. So thank you, gentlemen, for your time. Next on the agenda is First Reading Ordinances, a grant telecommunications systems franchise to Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC and Eagle Point Fiber LLC. Director Yeager will be speaking to us this evening.
Good evening. Am I on?
You are.
Uh, good evening. We had two companies who approached us and asked us to establish franchise agreements with them for telecommunications services. These ordinances are very similar to the one that we, that council adopted back in April of this year with Visor. You know, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, but it's just a standard agreement for telecommunications services. Uh, again, we have various franchise agreements with different companies here in the city. Um, and the franchise agreements really line out what the expectations are so that we can clarify what those expectations are on both sides, both for the city and then also for the company itself. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council, any questions? Okay, so would the council, excuse me, we have a staff report. Would the acting city manager please read the ordinance and, and on page one oh six, in title only?
An ordinance adopting chapter three point nine six of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications system franchise to Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system and fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise.
Thank you. Would the council like to make a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, you have to read it a second time.
You have to read it a second time. Have I got a motion? Read it a second time.
I would move to have the ordinance read a second time in title only.
Seconded.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. I need to take a bio break, so we'll come back in five minutes and talk to me. I'll set everything up again. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead and read the ordinance.
Okay. An ordinance adopting chapter three point nine six of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications system franchise to Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system and fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise.
Have moved to adopt the ordinance on page one oh six.
Seconded.
We have a motion on the second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. So say no. Motion passes. Now we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you. Come on, come on. Counselor Johnson's on now. And the second is ordinance adopting chapter three point nine seven of the Albany Municipal Code. Would the council like, oh, excuse me. Would the acting city manager please read the ordinance on one, page one twenty-one, in title only?
An ordinance adopting chapter three point nine seven of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications system franchise to Eagle Point Fiber LLC for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system and fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise.
Thank you. Would the council like to make a motion to have the red, our ordinance read a second time in title only?
Move to have the ordinance read a second time in title only.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
An ordinance adopting chapter three point nine seven of the Albany Municipal Code and granting a non-exclusive telecommunications system franchise to Eagle Point Fiber LLC. non-exclusive telecommunications system franchise to Eagle Point Fiber LLC for the construction and operation of a telecommunications system and fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise.
Thank you, Director. Would the council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance on page 121.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Director. Go home. Thank you. Award number seven, item, award of a contract, water master plan, FP-22-01, Ryan Beath, Beath, on page 136, 138 of your packet.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff has recommended council award the contract for FP 2201, the Water Master Plan. This project is included in the capital improvement program. There are adequate funds to complete the work. Total amount of the contract, the total amount of the contract is $873,757. The request for proposals was advertised for a month and was also provided directly to local.
I think your battery might be dying.
Hello?
That, something's on.
But, now there we go.
That's better.
Okay. Okay, let's see. Okay, so, um, the request proposals was advertised for, and was all, was advertised for a month and was also provided directly to local engineering firms. One proposal was received. However, this proposal consisted of a team of five separate firms that had been assembled by West Yoast of Eugene, Oregon to address the unique needs of the city's water plan. Um, team includes multiple firms with successful experience of providing consulting services to the city. We are fortunate to have each of them back, working together, to pull the individual components of the water system into a singular, inclusive guide to guide decades of water system capital projects. So, why do we need this now? The water system, the Water Master Plan is the foundation of the capital improvement program. These plans set a course for how to handle system deficiencies and how to prepare for forecast growth. Um, these plans are opportunities to stop and take a dive into not only how the system's functioning, but to also revisit how we need it to function, uh, for now and in the future. These plans are typically dated on 10-year intervals, and the previous plan was completed nearly 20 years ago. Um, there are also relatively new requirements for master plans from the Oregon Health Authority that require plans developed through 2018 to include seismic risk assessment and 50-year mitigation plans. Well, here is to identify critical backbone infrastructure needed to supply water during an emergency and to identify any little projects that may be needed to help assure that critical backbone infrastructure provide water service in the event of the inevitable. Um, as some council memo, this project will be pleaded in a four-month approach over a period of 18 months. So, with that, we recommend council authorize Director B by resolution to enter into a contract with West Yoast and their team to complete the water system plan. Take any questions?
Just, thank you very much, Mr. B. Counsel, have any questions? Counsel Kupczynski?
Yes, normally when we go out for bids, even though you only got one return on this one, uh, just luck of the draw, uh, usually staff has an estimate of how much that will actually come to. This came in at over $800,000. What was the staff estimate originally?
So, we did some, um, investigation into that, um, kind of a marketing thing, um, and was, it was relatively close to that. We also have, um, so the 2004 master plan, the original one, uh, for that we would need this. Um, and based on that cost, inflation applied and the addition of the canal work and the, um, uh, seismic work and the hydropower assessment that we're doing, um, it's right in the ballpark. So, it's.
So, I, I think Counsel Kupczynski was asking for, usually there's a table that kind of outlines what our initial estimates were and then what the projects came in at.
We.
Is that what you're looking for?
So, we, we didn't do it. It's not like a, like a, a line item cost. It's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a very large multidisciplinary, like.
So, I mean, is it a?
Effort, so.
I, I think I can help. So, Counsel Kupczynski, the tables you're used to seeing are for um, construction projects, and we provide those bid summaries for all of the, the bids that we receive for the construction projects with the engineer's estimate, and it's broken out by the different, um, aspects that a construction project would have, mobilization and, you know, all those things. This is not a construction project. This is a, a master planning project, so it, we just don't do that sort of summary for you. Um, but the answer to your question about the engineer's estimate is, as Ryan said, um, when we did a cost escalation from the previous master plan and then added in the new, um, requirements that are now in place that weren't in place 20 years ago, um, I think this is a little bit more than we had estimated. I think we're, um, off by, I don't know, I don't want to guess, but I think it was within, um, a 10% or so of our estimate. Um, but I would also say that, like everything else, consulting services right now are astronomical.
So, I'm, I'm inferring that this is a, a fluid target, so it could come in, uh.
Lower, yeah.
No, could come in higher.
Yeah.
Well, the, the contract is for the amount.
Okay.
And so, similar to a construction project, if they need to add additional work, we would have to go through a process to approve additional payments.
And get it back to council for approval.
Right. And, and like other projects, I think our requirement is if there's a 10% over on capital expenditures, we come back to the council for approval. So, that's, that's still in place.
Thank you very much. Counsel, uh, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, would the council like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Last question?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I was wondering, are you able to use anything that has been, wasn't in place or what was in place now, or do you have to reinvent the, or do they have to reinvent the whole wheel?
So, so we do have an existing master plan, and it is almost 10 years old. So, part of this project will to, be to dig into that old stuff and, um, and start with that, essentially. There, there will be some revisiting of existing information, um, but a lot of this will be new. This will be a new look at the system.
I would also say, and I'm sorry, Ryan, you inherited my terrible microphone, so I'm sorry. Um, it's the worst microphone. The, um, one of the great things about the team of consultants that has proposed for this is that they, um, it includes consultants who have very recently done water system modeling for the distribution system, which is a significant work effort. So, they don't have to start from zero on the water model, for instance. Um, there's a, an engineering firm that has done a lot of work on the canal that we've had to do over, in very recent years, and so they don't have to start from zero. So, there is a lot of existing work that this particular group of consultants is ideal, ideally suited for. So, if we had gotten a different group of consultants, we would have basically had to start from scratch with those. So, this is, this is a good situation.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Director Bailey, and thank you, Rich. I appreciate that. You know, it seems like everything's, uh, Ryan, sorry, everything's a mil, you know, hey, here a million, there a million, everywhere a million, you know? So, um, it's gotta be done, so, uh, no, no choice.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. So, would the council like to make a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Question also?
Go ahead.
How is this going to be paid for? This, uh, 800 and some thousand?
So, um, the majority of this project will be paid by City of Albany ratepayers.
Ratepayers.
Correct.
So, are water bills going to go up, or are we making enough money off the present rate?
Well, there is, um, there is funding for this project now. It's been budgeted. So, um, I think, um, you know, this project will result in a new project list. The, the purpose of this is to put together new CIP projects, so that will, um, that will eventually, well, you guys will revisit the, um, the fees and the SDCs.
I didn't understand what you said there.
So, the purpose of this project, I mean, eventually, um, this will affect rates and, and fees and SDCs, eventually, but that'll be, that's a whole nother process. Once these projects have been figured out and the project list for the SDCs and everything have been updated, then, um, the council will have an opportunity to, uh, adjust rates and, and all that.
So, so this is not immediate, right?
Right.
No, it's not immediate.
Okay.
So, the funding for this project is available in our existing water capital funds.
Okay, that's what I, I think that's what he's looking for.
And, um, we have the, uh, funding budgeted to pay for this project, and, um, we are not raising water rates to pay for this. It's just part of the mix of capital expenditures that we have in the water fund. This is one capital project in the water fund.
Thank you.
Well, that's reassuring because I, um, high water sewer bills are probably the biggest comments I get.
Sure.
And are these, um, all these problems we got listed here, are these problems that are showing up, or are these things that we think we ought to just kind of look at and see if we got a problem?
So, as far, as far as problems being listed, um, there are known issues with the system, uh, but the purpose of this project is to, uh, re-initiate an assessment of the system to determine what needs to be fixed.
So, it's running along pretty good, and we're just, uh, thinking we need to reassess all this stuff?
Well.
Is that what we're, uh, what we're doing?
Yeah, so, uh, master planning is done to look at the existing conditions of your system now and identify any constraints. So, for instance, places where we have water demand that exceeds our ability to provide it, or if, for instance, we don't have adequate reservoir storage, which we do, but that's a, a common thing that's looked at in master plans. The other big, huge part of the master plan is identifying the needs of the water system as the city grows over the next 20-year planning timeline. So, we're looking at the comprehensive plan and, and future growth. We look at growth rates and we, uh, predict what are we going to need and where are we going to need it? How does that line up with what our current system looks like, and what improvements do we need to make to add that capacity or extend the system in places it doesn't currently exist? So, the master plan is not, it is looking at the current condition of the system, um, but at the end, we'll have a list of capital projects that will inform the capital improvement program, not only for, uh, not really as much for like a perpetual life routine, maintenance, and replacement program, more for growth and additional capacity and expansion of the, of the distribution system, the treatment plants, the reservoirs, et cetera. So, at the end of it, you end up with a, a project list. And as Ryan said, you know, in two, in a year and a half, when this is done, we will come to the council and say, the, the master plan identified X hundreds of millions of dollars of needs. It's going to be a huge number, but we don't have to tackle that. You know, it's, it's the same process we use for wastewater transportation, et cetera. So, it will develop a project list that will guide the water system for the next 20 years. It's a foundational document, as Ryan mentioned, um, to make sure the system can support the city for the next 20 years.
Thank you, Director. Counsel Novak.
How often are we going to do this in the future? Every 10 years?
So, the recommendation is to update your master plan every 10 years. This one hasn't been updated for 20 years, so, um, it'll be a big list. We would shoot for 10 years, but it's hard to do that when you have multiple systems that you need to do master planning for on overlapping cycles with limited capacity.
I guess I don't recall we've done it that often in the past.
2004, I think, was the last one, if you remember back to 2004.
Okay, how long ago was that? A while.
Yeah.
It's a long time ago.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counsel Novak?
Okay, so, I don't know if this is a comment or a question, but I think I heard someone say that the cost of consultation, that's not the word, I think it is consultation, is through the roof. So, one of my questions is, um, we have to use consulting services to figure this out? This is not something that staff can look at stuff and say, you can't assess it on your own. We do definitely need to go that route with.
Oh, yeah.
Consultants. Okay.
I don't know, Ryan, if you want to talk, Ryan?
So, the, the only thing, I mean, the, the simplest response to that question is that it's very similar to the SDC exercise, in which, um, full-time people at the city who work, you know, people who work here full-time at the city don't need that skillset to keep the city running. So, every so often, on projects like this, we'll hire, uh, people temporarily, um, to take care of, um, these, these, uh, very, uh, specific skillset-type tasks. So, it's, um, as much as maybe we'd like to do a lot of it, we, we really can't.
So, when we hire these consultants, is, is that covered in the budget as well? Yeah?
Yes.
And how much do we, how much are we spending on them? If that was said, I missed it.
Well, the, the master plan is being done by a team of consultants. So, the entire project cost that's in the memo, which I don't have in front of me, is the cost to hire the consultant, was there's one primary consultant, West Yoast, uh, which is an engineering firm, and then they have multiple subconsultants. So, even within engineers, there are people that specialize. So, our engineers are very much generalists, although we do put them in categories. Rob and Ryan are, um, sort of planning engineers that develop and manage our, uh, facility plans. So, West Yoast is going to do the treatment work. There's another team that will do the distribution system modeling. There's another team that will do the canal. There's the hydro specialist. It's a team of specialized consultants, and that's what that cost covers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, Director. Thank you, Ryan. I appreciate it. Would the council like to make a motion?
I would move to award the contract as presented in the resolution on page 138.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Any council like to make any changes?
I have one small, I don't know if you'd call it a point of clarification. It's from the minutes on March 21st, page 2 of 3, fourth paragraph. It says, "Novak asked for clarification of the mention of a new TIF district on pages 10 and 16 of the report. Hasty answered, saying, 'TIF meant tax increment financing,' and gave a brief overview of what the TIF district represents. When I noted, um, the mention of a TIF district on pages 10 and 16, that was, um, because I asked if they were looking at the creation of a new TIF district to fund the development, and I was told yes." So, this paragraph doesn't really reflect that, and I just want to, for the record, say, it wasn't that I was asking what a TIF district is. I was asking specifically because it was mentioned on pages 10 and 15, 10 and 16 of that report, if TIF was going, if there was going to be the creation of a new tax increment financing district to pay for the development. And I was told, yes, they were considering that. So, thank you.
Mayor, may I make an answer to that, please?
Sure.
You raised the, uh, question about that selection at the, the last, you raised the question, the question of that selection, um, at the last time it came to the council, and we took it back and listened to the recording and reworded it somewhat to make it align specifically with what was actually said. And in fact, the, the respondent didn't directly answer your question. Um, but I promise you that that rendering of the wording is as close as we can get to what was actually spoken in the meeting. But I promise you that that rendering of the wording is as close as we can get to what was actually spoken in the meeting.
Thank you.
I, I know what a tax increment financing district is, and I strongly recall asking if that was going to be a consideration for funding of the development. So. I can re-listen to it myself.
Okay, thank you. Any other changes? Do you have a motion?
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Uh, item B, oh, but, uh, next, this, yes.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry, but I don't think that everyone actually voted. I'm not sure I heard all voices. Could we redo that?
You didn't hear my voice because my, my mic was off, but I was thinking yes.
Okay. Me too.
Want to do a quick roll call?
Silent votes are in the affirmative.
Let's go ahead and do a roll call, vote on adoption, consent, consent calendar.
Thank you. Bartholomew.
Yes.
Sorry Counselor, I didn't put your title in. Counsel Kupczynski.
Yes.
Counsel Johnson.
Yes.
Counsel Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Olson.
Reluctantly, yes.
Counselor Novak.
I will say yes, having stated what I stated prior to this, and with all due respect to your record keeping, because I understand that everyone's doing the best they can, and I, I don't mean you any disrespect at all, ever.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion passes, thank you. Uh, next is staff report. Um, Matt Harrington's gonna cut, chamber audio upgrade. Matt Harrington on page one sixty-seven and one sixty-eight of your, your folder. Your agenda.
I'm just gonna comment that I think we've had ample, uh, demonstration this evening of the need for this topic.
I'm assuming we're gonna say yes to this.
Excuse me, don't we have to finish, uh, the resolutions that were part of the con-
Um, no, that's, that's part of the consent calendar.
Wouldn't we have to adopt them?
That's part of the consent calendar.
That's part of the consent calendar, just by definition.
Yes, item nine.
Thank you. No, I'm on, I'm, item eight, consent calendar, uh, the resolutions on page one sixty-two and one sixty-six.
That's-
Just by adopting the consent calendar, those by default get approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
Next up, Matthew. Matt?
Alright, uh, thank you Mayor and Counsel. Uh, as Counselor Smith, uh, stated just a bit ago, might have had a little bit of, uh, demonstration of the issues that we've had over the last, hmm, what, a year or so that we've been back here in chambers. Um, if you recall, we made some upgrades to our video system back at the tail end of twenty twenty, um, capitalizing on some CARESAC dollars that were available. Our, uh, camera system and our displays were, um, quite out of date at that time, and that was our focus. It's become very apparent that the audio system, which is over ten years old, uh, is also a little deficient at this point. Part of that is due to equipment age, part of that is due to, uh, the change that we use this room now that we didn't back then. But it's our goal to, uh, invest, uh, budgeted dollars in the Council, um, Mayor IT equipment replacement budget and augment that with some funds from ARPA to do an audio upgrade in this room. And that will include, uh, microphones and speakers. We don't have the exact plan yet. We have a pretty good idea, but as we learned from the camera project, things change as, as install gets going. So, um, we still also need to, um, work out the purchasing logistics, um, with our purchasing manager when she returns from vacation. So, this is just seeking, uh, permission to move forward with that project.
Counsel, any questions?
I think it's a much needed project, and I'm all in favor of it.
We, we hope it'll improve, uh, the in-room experience, especially for those at the dais, um, and also people online as well. And then, uh, we are also looking into upgrading the hearing assist, uh, system, which is the oldest piece of equipment that's in that, uh, equipment rack in there.
Wow.
So.
Okay, thank you. Would the Counsel like to make a motion?
I am happy to make the motion to approve the, um, audio upgrade. Do what needs to be done.
Seconded.
What, what, did you say something? What?
I have a motion and a second. I'm see, I'm glad we're still laughing. Uh, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much, uh, Matt.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, item B is sole source procurement for RITE training. Uh, Chief Harden is gonna speak with us on, you're on page one sixty-nine, uh, resolution number one seventy-one.
Good evening again, Mayor and Counselors. This is a request to the Council, uh, acting as your local contract review board to adopt the attached resolution in attachment A that will waive competitive bidding and adopt written findings and approve the use of sole source procurement method for the police department to procure training classes from the Wright Academy LLC and authorize myself to award and execute a sole source contract for the training with Wright Academy LLC from the Villages, Florida. I'll be up to answering questions.
Any questions, Counsel?
Yes.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Uh, Chief, these are one and two day training sessions. Are they materially intensive enough that they actually are gonna have some actual intrinsic effect? That will do, you know, that much good for the cost that we're paying for them?
Correct, yeah. It's, uh, it's a bit steep, but, uh, one of the things that did not make it in the memo, uh, is that we have a mandate from DP to do, uh, equity training, uh, that's new. Uh, this will meet that standard, and by doing a train the trainer class, it'll allow my staff and other agencies to, to become trainers and meet that standard.
That's, that's good, that's the good part. Thank you.
Chief, I'm sorry I missed a word. Could you repeat where, where this mandate comes from?
Uh, DPSST, which is our, uh, state academy, basically. It's our training authority that tells us which training we must have, uh, on a yearly basis, or a three-year rotating window.
So from the state?
Correct.
Has so many other mandates. Thank you. Okay.
Counsel, would like, somebody like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the IGA as written.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you Chief.
Uh, my bad, it wasn't an IGA.
It's okay, we, we know, we, we-
Sole source procurement.
We forgive you. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, business from the Council. I'll start on that end. Uh, with Counsel Bartholomew, and come this way. Nothing? Counsel Olson?
Uh, yes, um. Uh, one of my constituents, uh, was downtown, and the, uh, guy that rides around on that two-wheeled scooter almost ran into a woman, and, on, on the sidewalk. And he asked, uh, I thought, he thought that, um, bicycles, scooters, uh, so forth were not allowed on the sidewalks. And is there a special dispensation for the guy that does the-
The park wise?
Parking attendants, park wise guy?
That's a great question.
I told him I thought there was.
Uh, it's a great question. I'll have to research it, but I would imagine that, just like with my people, the same applicable laws, uh, apply, but I'll have to research it and make sure that there's not anything in place with the Downtown Association. I'll get back to you.
Okay, yeah, it's too bad Lisa Grotto is gone. She, she'd be probably the one to ask. Thank you.
Counsel Johnson? Counsel Johnson?
Well, uh, one thing I can say is, we've heard from a couple people tonight about the homeless situation, and I know everyone, we all say, I don't know what we can do, what can we do? It is getting worse, and we have to, we have to figure out some sort of solution. My question, and, and I didn't ask it at the time, 'cause I didn't want to interrupt a gentleman, but, um, I had asked the city manager if the, uh, like the tall grass letters go out, where if they don't cut them, we cut them for them and we charge them. And I'm wondering if this can be the same type of thing with these blackberry bushes, or on Simpson Park where, or Simpson Park's a park, so that wouldn't work, but on these private places, can we do that? Because if they don't have a place to hide, then maybe it'd at least give some sort of a solution to part of it. I mean, it's getting to where no one, no one wants to use the parks, the walkways, even their backyard, and that's pretty dang sad.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I answer that?
Yes.
Uh, it is, uh, with the cemetery that we heard about earlier this evening, it would be an abatement process, uh, that would occur there. Anytime we have a, a, a private property owner that is out of compliance with some sort of land use, then that would, uh, be an abatement process. As you well know, that is a long process, so we do the best that we can. In regards to the grass letters, we did meet with both, um, the fire department, eh, our community development, and us. Uh, we find that once we send those letters out and we do some spot checks, we do have normal, fairly high level of compliance on those.
Yeah, alright, yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know the answer, but we do need to figure out something to do. I mean, um, there, there's got to be, and, instead of, okay, Chief Harden, you, you said, okay, we go ahead and we get, we try to give them services, whatever. They're, they're camping on places that it says no camping, overnight camping, and whatever, so why can't we just move them? I mean, why can't we, you just say, move? I mean, I, I know it's, it's more complicated than that, but it just seems like if I decided to go camping somewhere, I'm sure I would, wouldn't be allowed.
That's right.
It's a-
It, it's a tough one. Uh, I, I would concur with what's been said in the past, that, that this is not just a law enforcement problem, it's a community problem. We're obviously a piece of that, because when it becomes acute, then we get calls on it. And, uh, I do think that we recognize that, that this is a problem that isn't necessarily born in criminal conduct. There, you have mental health at play, you have substance abuse at play, so our role always will be to try to help that person get to those resources. Uh, they do get a warning, uh, and they have some time to comply, but it's not immediate. We also have some recent appellate court decisions that work against us in that regard, so we have to follow the law in that regard. Uh, but I do, uh, I live here too, so I feel the frustrations of the people in the city, so, um, if I had a magic wand, I'd have a lot more staff that not only have substance abuse training, mental health training, uh, and add more officers to try to, to stay ahead of it. Um, and we're simply doing the best that we can.
Oh, and Chief Harden, I agree with that totally. You know, I was thinking, as I was reading some of the things, uh, in the papers and stuff. You know, it is a city thing.
It's a country thing.
It's all of us, and so, um. We just need to get more, more police officers, and they say, well, that's not the answer. Well, you know, maybe it is, 'cause you can only spread yourself so thin. You can't be everywhere at one time, so, uh, I'll get off my soapbox now, but I still think it's something that we have to work on, because I do not want to become Portland or Eugene, and it's getting bad. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor.
Counselor Smith? I don't, I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Counsel Kupczynski?
Uh, just to note that the next council meeting, I will be on vacation. Whether or not I'm able to participate, uh, long distance, that's, it depends upon where we are and whether or not we have any Wi-Fi connection, so, uh, I will not be here for the next meeting.
Alright, thank you. Counsel Novak?
Um, yeah, I, I would concur with what Counselor Johnson mentioned with regard to the situation, which everyone knows, and I picked up on Chief Harden, something you said in response with regard to the legal system working against us right now. For instance, I guess the decriminalization of hard drugs. I'm just at a loss. I'm just at a loss. I hear from so many constituents with issues that should not be and yet are, and it seems very wrong when we can only do something if, if and when someone gets hurt, and in the meantime, you have people who can't walk the Simpson Trail because of the feces and the people who aren't in their right minds, potentially being there and being threatening, and, you know, I don't, I don't want to just lither on, but this is big stuff. This is important, and I know we have task forces. It just seems that we need to do, there has to be something we can do. I, I, I can't abide the thought that we're so powerless.
Yes. So, so I recently spent some time in Portland and Salem and Kaiser, and, uh, I spent a couple hours today with a bunch of mayors, dealing with another unfunded mandate that's coming down the pipe, and it's quite frustrating. They're gonna force some things on, on the city, the cities, that, um, I'm engaging with, uh, other mayors, and we wrote a letter, and I can't give you the specifics about climate and the things they want us to do, and we can't pay for it, there's no way. But, we're gonna stand up to them, so the city attorney's gonna meet with other city attorneys. We just can't have it. These unfunded mandates and telling us, basically taking away our, our own autonomy, our, uh, autonomy?
That's the word.
Yeah.
Good word.
Yeah, and so, it's, it's getting quite frustrating, and, um, anyway. Uh, we had a great car show this weekend. I was, I hope you, I hope you guys had a chance to get out there. We're two hundred and thirty cars are at Bryant Park. They liked the venue. Uh, they liked, uh, the kids are out playing. I gave over forty tokens away with the carousel, and it was just a wonderful day. And, uh, other than that, I'm, I'm done. Um. Uh, can I have a city manager's report, please?
Yes, um, just a couple of things. Um, one, some good news. We, uh, Albany received, uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant from the state, so this is, um, money from the state that was allocated by the legislature. Um, we didn't apply for it, it just appeared. And, um, it is for, um, uh, trash and sanitation services, can be used for trash pickup, debris cleanup, abandoned vehicle removal, provision of dumpsters and trash bins, et cetera. It cannot be used for campsite removal, but, um, could be used to pay for some other things around town, which would help, um, improve things in Albany. So, we, staff is gonna come up with a plan, uh, what we think we can do with this funding and, um, get started with that. So, free money, which is very, very unusual, first time in my life, or my career here, that I've seen this happen. The other thing is, uh, just a, a quick update. I think it was Counselor Johnson who brought up the psilocybin, uh, potential for a ballot measure on psilocybin, um, facilities, and, um, Sean Kidd wanted me to let you know that he will be discussing that with you at the January, no, July twenty-fifth work session, um, so you'll be hearing about that again. I wanted to let you know that I didn't fall off the plate, and that's all for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next meeting Monday, Ju- July twenty-fifth at four PM here in Chambers for a work session. Wednesday, July twenty-seventh at six PM for a regular meeting, and I will, with that, I will adjourn the meeting.
Sir? I forgot to ask, um, Ms. Vanderburgh wanted to share-